Good evening, everybody. Welcome to YouTube. The city council meeting today, Wednesday, December 19th. We rise to our implication by the Minister of Health and Science, only in the dignity of the church, qualified our official position, we live by official wisdom. That's right.
Please bow your heads. Dear God, Father of all, we pray for your blessings on the leaders of our community, our state, and our nation. Help them have the courage and wisdom to make good and right decisions on every front. Be with our servicemen and women, who are far away from home during the holiday season, and give them courage. Let us never forget our gratitude to them. Be with our local police and firefighters, as they risk their lives to protect us. Give us hope for the future of our dear children, and may they be kept safe from harm. Help us remember the success of our nation rests in their hands. We pray for love and understanding, truth and justice. Let us love one another, practice mercy, forgiveness, and grant us charity, charity which never fails. Dear God, we ask for peace on earth and goodwill to all. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Bob Blackwell, from the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia for which change, one nation under God, with universal liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, again, everyone. Glad to see so many people came out tonight. I've got a boost of happiness, audience, all the time, but I recognize that on some crucial issues that we have, it dictates people coming out to offer their opinion, and that is something that we will always honor. So, Commissioner, did anything you need to add to our agenda?
I have a couple of agenda changes, please.
Yes, sir.
The first item is make a motion to amend tonight's agenda to where items number four date into new item number four, which will read as follows. Following the presentation by that important company providing the details of financial proposals and recommended financing options, consider for approval a resolution of the division of City Brunswick ratifying approval of law amendment adopted by the URA of Brunswick to issue the agency's revenue bond and authorizing the execution of intergovernmental agreement between the city and the URA.
Okay. Okay, we're following motion seven to merge number eight and number four together to form a new number four. Are there any further discussion? Here in all the faith, please raise your hand. That motion carries an answer. Okay, that would be our new number four.
Max, I'll make a motion to add the following items to the meeting agenda to be included under the city attorney's items number eight and nine. Consider for discussion an ordinance amendment to chapter three, alcoholic beverages, permit sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises for additional hour and a half, 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. on Sundays to be effective January 2nd, 2019.
Second. Motion seven to add item number eight of that amendment that's been presented. Are there any further discussion? Here in all the faith, please raise your hand. That motion carries an answer. Thank you.
And then to add item number nine, consider approval of some of the amendment to the operational agreement between the joint order sewer commission, JFC, Glen County, and the City of Brunswick.
Okay, follow the motion seven for adding item number nine, amendment to JFC. Are there any further discussion? Here in all the faith, please raise your hand. Motion carries an answer. Okay, we have a new number four, we have a new number eight, and a new number nine. Any further additions to our agenda? Okay. Moving right along, again, I'd say I'd like to welcome everybody who chose to come out to our meeting tonight. Our first item on our agenda, a public comment here. Madam Clerk, I seem to be the one person, no, excuse me, there's the person that signed up. Can you access you? Is your group? Yes?
Yes, they're here. I don't know who's stepping up, but...
Good evening, everybody. All right, well, I'm here tonight to talk about Coast of Dure Community Action Authority's calendar. You may access this calendar, but I'm going to answer that by telling you what calendar stands for. Cali stands for Future Action. Speak to the mic and speak into your mouth. All right, sorry. Good evening, everybody. All right, I'm here on behalf of Coast of Dure Community Action Authority's Cali Board, and Cali stands for Community Action Youth Leadership Initiative. Now, it is our belief that in Cali to enrich our students in five areas, areas of entrepreneurship, leadership, career development, higher education, and mentorship. Now, extending outside of the classrooms that we afford our students the opportunity for exposure in these five areas. For example, higher education, we attend college expos, campus visits, leadership, we allow the kids to, afford the kids the opportunity to travel to Atlanta for youth assembly, when they get the opportunity to sit in the House of Representatives in the seat of our lawmakers, when they get the opportunity to argue for our bill for themselves. I could go on and on and tell you a whole lot more about Cali, but at this time, we allow our students to come and introduce themselves, and let you know their short-term, long-term roles, and what's good for them.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Trevor Thomas. I go to the academy and a short-term goal of mine is to finish high school, and a long-term goal of mine is to become a robotics engineer or a culinary artist in college.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Simpson. I attend Brunswick High School, and my short-term is to graduate from high school, and my long-term is to be a successful health care specialist.
Good evening. My name is Addison Lookins. I am 14 years old, and I attend Brunswick High School. My short-term goal is to get a job by the time I turn 15. My long-term role is to become an anesthesiologist when I get older.
Good evening. My name is Jane Ashley. I go to Vanna Academy, 17 years old. My long-term goal is to go to the university, and my short-term goal is to finish high school.
My name is Tajah Arden. I go to Westwood School, 13th grade, and my short-term goal is to finish my school, and my long-term goal is to be a pediatrician.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Holtz. I'm 16, 11th grade at Brunswick High School. My short-term goal is to graduate from high school by the time I turn 15, and my long-term goal is to enter the business.
Good evening. My name is Shamara Thomas. I'm the coordinator of the Cali Program, and I'm one of the coordinators. We brought our students here today so they can have exposure to see the light, to pass a bill, to be able to speak for the community, so that you can make a big noise. We are preparing our students to go to Georgia United Nations Assembly in the month of March, so we're giving them exposure so that they can learn how to advocate for a bill, so they can speak up for the community themselves and their environment. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming, and thank you for telling us the goals. We hope that we here, this community, can help you realize those goals. Stay on track, everything should go right, we will help you in all the ways we can. All the people here are passionate to help you as well, because they are our community citizens, and I'm sure that they will be, and somehow will give the dollars as well. Thank you so very much for bringing to us, and thank you for being able to speak to us, let us know your short-term and long-term goal. Thank you. And you want to stay in line while we... Okay, Commissioner, move right along. Our next speaker is Mr. Bob Blackwell. Blackwell, please speak your name and your address, and he's got four minutes, sir.
My name is Bob Blackwell, with 412 Riverside Drive. Eighteen years ago, it was decided that spending a bunch of SPOSS fees on the lodge conference center was merited. Today, two and a half million dollars of SPOSS funds remain escrowed for the conference center. However, it will take 11.2 million, which is four and a half times the escrow funds, for a more luxurious conference center to be built. The breakdown is the two and a half million of escrow funds, five million of new borrowing, 2.2 billion of debt service over 20 years, and 1.5 billion projected operating losses over five years. Accordingly, over 11.2 billion of conference center expenditures is essentially on tonight's agenda. That figure does not include operating losses after year five. Fortunately, City Manager Jim Drong has indicated that Brunswick can pay for the annual debt service and operating losses without raising taxes. While that's reassuring, Brunswick, like its citizens, can only spend each buck once. The city has other priorities that should be addressed with its bucks. 11.2 million dollars of expenditures for a conference center, that 94.1% in the recent Brunswick Business Poll opposed, most of those in opposition were strongly opposed. Rather than moving forward with this white elephant project, the city should strongly consider returning the unspent SPOSS funds to the taxpayers in accordance with provisions of Georgia law. Moving forward with this ill-fated project will cost me and other voters to watch our opinions more closely when future SPOSS referendums are on the ballot. In summary, conference center note, return two and a half million dollars of SPOSS funds to taxpayers' gifts. That result would be good governance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that's all they've signed up for. Public comment. I'm sure someone else has really asked his feet, and I will allow them three minutes to speak if they have signed up with you.
Hey, Jeff Kilgore.
Thank you very much for positive reading. Most of the time, I go to meetings, people say that I'm in the wrong place, and I offer assistance to escort me out.
Sir, just give me some names and then you can add that.
Jeff Kilgore.
Yes, and his address?
3210, like I said, Brunswick.
Yes.
I want to say to you that, kind of late to the opposition to the conference center, I consistently thought that eventually logic and reason and financing would prevail, that the unfeasibility of the project would govern what portion to us. You know, in a minimum, what I would urge you to do with the people in this community that are so divided on this project, is to defer it for another period of time to really get the sale done and closed, and people convince that it's something that you should do and can do, and you can pay for. And so, I'm committed to learning what I don't know now, but what I can tell you is that in 1992, the Supreme Court of Georgia, in a case termed Big E B Story, approved a change in the SPOSS law, and the determination that a project is infeasible or unfeasible. And so, you should not be misled by anybody who's told you that you must complete this project. It can be redirected and redesigned, or abandoned altogether, and the SPOSS law provides for money to be returned to the taxpayers, either through paying down debt or reducing property taxes. And so, I would ask you to, very humbly, to consider a deferral tonight for another period of time to make sure the public have all the information they need, so that you can support the surety warrant. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Janice Sheldon.
Good evening. My name is Janice Sheldon, of the Cumberland Island Circle in Brunswick, 10th Riverdale. It's so very frustrating to watch people stand for you, expressing what appeared to be salient arguments against your most recent plan for the use of opium, by which way, which by way is very addictive. This use of opium easily becomes the scourge of many government entities, and we try to express our concerns that it's happening here, right before our very eyes, with this issue of the conference center, opening with other people's money. It's also sad, as well as frustrating, that we have no opportunity for two-way dialogue on this issue. We speak to blank stares in this, the only arena where you gather as an official body. There's no chance for an actual group conversation about our concerns and your intended solution. We continue to ask you not to do this. You don't know what the actual cost to build this project will be, nor does there appear to be a pro forma on costs of running. You do know that it'll be a huge money lose for years to come. If the city has enough in its future revenues to cover the annual losses, along with the $360,000 debt service, and I say, great for us, congratulations to Brunswick. I also repeat, the request you've heard over and over, commissioners repurpose that money, our money. Think for a moment, what another near miss hurricane can do to our taxpayers. Note that I said, near miss. What if we're struck by the real thing? What about another serious economic downturn? Remember what the last one did to us with its numerous foreclosures? Remember what the last one did, and think ahead. I beg of you, use our money to plan ahead, to be able to help our citizens should we have a disaster of those sorts again. Use our money to improve infrastructure and our citizens' safety. Please don't get caught up in some so-called downward spiral caused by the addiction to and misuse of opium. It can be disastrous. One other thing, the taxpayers did not elect the members of the URA. You appointed them, and now you tell us that you're looking to the URA for all management decisions with regarding the center. So you'll basically wash your hands of it, and expedite it to the next impervious level of your hands of office, who are not accountable to the citizens. Please tell us, don't you see anything wrong with this picture? I think so.
Thank you.
Sandy Dean.
Sandy Dean, 1127 Union Street, Brunswick, Georgia. I'm back. A bond rating is telling the investors what level of risk you are. It's kind of like a person's credit score. The better your credit score, the better your interest rates are going to be. The City of Brunswick has a bond rating. Therefore, we are going to be paying higher interest rates. I keep hearing from the city manager that the city has $360,000 in the budget every year for this project, and they will not raise our property taxes. If we have all this extra money, why don't we have a bond rating? If we have all this extra money, why are police, fire, and public boards all grossly underpaid, not even close to what Glen County pays? If we have all this extra money, why are building permits three times more in the city than in county? If we have all this extra money, why are liver licenses twice as much in the cities and the county? If we have all this money, why didn't you just enact a new fee for stormwater runoff? You keep thinking this project, it's this project people have a problem with. It's the fact that the city has an obligation to fulfill basic services, and you can't even do that. I know you don't want to start over, but no one on this board, or the URA board, has been able to answer simple questions. Like y'all talking about $5 million bond, your budget shows $1,620,000 that you're borrowing. But then it's only an $8 million project, why should we expect you to answer our silly questions?
Alex Mur.
Alex Mur, Coastal Advocate for Brunswick Labs at 1312 Newcastle Street, and Brunswick President at 1225. Good evening, may I ask, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. As you know, one of the labs is a nonprofit located in downtown Brunswick. Part of our mission is to help coastal communities thrive, which is why we've taken an interest in the conference center issue. We do support the efforts that this board has made to revitalize downtown Brunswick, and we applaud the steps to have taken to do so and improve our community. However, tonight, I'm going to ask you to defer the votes on item items four and seven, as they were taken in conference center construction and funding. There is no doubt that everyone is ready for Brunswick to thrive, and that may very well come from the building of a conference center. But before our limited resources and our taxpayers are put on the line, we need to be sure that this is a win-win for our community. It's important that we heed the information and studies provided by the experts we've hired to date, and the information necessary to convince our community to, oh, I'm sorry. It's important that we heed the information and studies provided by the experts we've hired. To date, the information necessary to convince our community to get behind this project has not been provided. Delaying these votes will allow an opportunity for this to happen. If these votes are deferred to the commission's second meeting in January, the board can still approve the financing option before the January 28 deadline, meaning the rates in the current proposal from Sterling National Bank would remain in place. With the extra time that could be afforded our community, 100 Labs would like to host a town hall meeting to allow an opportunity for constructive community dialogue around this issue, and discuss how we can move forward with projects to revitalize downtown with broader community support. We feel strongly that there is no need to vote on these items tonight, considering misconceptions and uncertainties surrounding this issue. Thank you for your time this evening, and your consideration of this important issue.
Thank you.
Kim Braden. He may not be here, Mary, he came and dropped it off just by the office this afternoon. He may not be here.
Anyone else?
No, that's concluded.
Since we do have, still have a little bit more time, anyone else would like to speak? No one? Well, if not, then we will close out that section of public comments out. Well, thank you, everybody, for being able to speak. Your comments are taken into consideration as we move forward with our agenda, and also move forward with our decision tonight. Our first item on our agenda is, as everyone will see, a conference center, and discussion of Mr. Zack Lai, who would like to address this body. Mr. Lai?
Good evening. My name is Reverend Zack Lai, 2509 R2 Street in Brunswick. Born here 79-plus years ago. I've seen this city do a tunneling job from the top all the way down to the bottom. Rather than that, the decisions that have affected our community are devastating. When you make a decision that is as serious as this one, it is absolutely imperative that our community is involved in the discussion. I'm here tonight, and the one thing I want to say is I never in my life expected to be on the same side as Sandy... Dean, and her cohort. And, you know, I don't like to read prepared statements, because I can't read my writing. But I'm going to struggle through this, because I think it is absolutely imperative for us to think before we leap. If you leap into something like happened when my mother ran for mayor of the city against Reginald Hoesendorf and his racism, what you can end up doing is closing a place like Orange Park Pool. If you leap into something without thinking about it, you can end up having blight all over your city, and then you blame the folk who you burden with the tax bills that they got to pay. When you leap into something without the people whom you're going to burden with that tax burden, without them sitting down with you to give you their side of the story, which may make you believe that what you can do is better things than have that building put up at this time in that place. I know for a fact, your decisions are hard job. Those decisions are so hard, that it is an honor and a privilege for us to have you sitting on this diocese, to make common sense decisions that will benefit our community. It is important to make sure your decisions will be more holy if you limit your power to include the entire community. A community that I love. I've been a part of it for a long, long time. We've given you the privilege and the honor to serve us, because we look to you to be folk who are stellar, who looks at the entire community. who looks at the entire community and look at the particular decisions that you make and see how they are going to affect the whole community in a positive way. Some folk up here about money. I'm up here about money too. But I'm up here about the decisions that can cause money to make a difference in all sectors of your community. Today, the desire to mitigate that outcome of the decisions that you make that could fall in line with the partners of crime with the county we live in. You know they taking our money. And we ain't arguing about it. We ain't saying one thing to the county with all of the money they end up with from the burden of the poor people that live in this community. We don't get a thing from them except their jail. And you pay a lot of money to incarcerate the poor. Here we are, figuring to be criminals with the county, the state, and the national decisions that have been burdening our particular community for a long, long time. There was decisions that were made that would have improved our lot. For an example, it was said that what would happen is if we got money from the government and gave it to Jacob Island, it would improve our lot. Millionaire's Village turned out real well. You know that, don't you, Mr. Mayor? You work for that. They got horses over there and everything, golf horses. They got reasons for people to come into their particular community to be able to enjoy the tourist trade that we are liking for this building. If you ain't got nobody coming here, what business is the building gonna serve? Is it gonna be for me? Because if it's gonna be, I'm a great preacher. I'll be able to convert you, Robert. I'll be able to say to Robert Griffin, "God wants you to do this and that in that building, but we got churches for that, so why do we need this building?" We make decisions that have caused us to have all kind of problems in this community where I live at. The air we breathe has hurt us. The roads we ride on are bumpy. The houses we live in are rotten. The jobs we have don't exist. The contracts that you let out don't come in our community. There is nothing happening with the kind of decisions that being made about a building that ain't coming into my part of town. I'd like to take all of you on a tour so that you can look exactly at how we being affected by the decisions that being made in this particular body. It does me no good to come here tonight to talk to you about this particular building when I know that there is so much that you could do. There is so much that you could accomplish. There are so many businesses you can create or help create. There are so many people that you could put in a position to where their homes and their houses are not in the places that you got to put people out there to walk, talking about enforcing the weeds. We have made decisions that have crippled where I live at. One of the decisions I know you made in this body was to give the Water and Sewer Committee, Commission, the Water and Sewer Department away that could have been a test power for this city. But it ended up being a net of, a mega instrument for the dollars everywhere except where I live at. We have people here that you say the URA is gonna sign for the money, the loan. But we gonna be responsible for the debt. Kinda crazy. They gonna get the money, hell, they'll be responsible to pay it back. So all right with me. Lamone got a lot of money. He's a Republican. He got money from that guy. Go ahead, and if they gonna sign this stuff called Melon, what they call that, M-O-U? Somebody out there, white folk don't know how to pronounce it. Pronounce it. That mess, if they gonna sign it, they gonna pay it back. Ain't nobody happy in this room tonight, but that report, uh, Financial Group A. They have the legacy. You gonna give them a deal, you $5 million, 4% interest. Hell, if they gave you $100 a week at 4% interest, I could pay for my groceries. That report is happy. They winning. The van got no burden. All they got is management acting. Clap, clap for that report. This decision falls heavily. It burdens heavily on the poor and the depressed. $5 million with rates that make managers happy leave the community that I represent tonight feeling different. For we've written, we've witnessed happy management before. Millions wasted on the river. One lonely building stands out there gazing to the river. With this particular body, let a crook come in from Cleveland, talk about the progress we were gonna have. All of the money spent curing that land could have been spent curing our community. But that ain't what happened. What happened is we made a decision that clap, clap, acting, acting, we gonna move from blueprint Brunswick that didn't have no black ink in it. We were gonna move from that down to the river, and there's one house standing out there right now, and the crook ain't gonna find it. But we got a burden. We ended up with a burden on the most wonderful project that you had paid for, the city of Brunswick had paid for, Water and Sewer. In the community I live in, trust me, it's hard for us to pay all the water bills and sewer bills. We have more people coming in this particular community from other places. Elkins, Elkins is happy. Y'all know where Elkins is? They're the so-called people who gonna build this great building. But they come from Jacksonville. Ain't nothing out of our community gonna allow us to make any decisions to build anything. David Hicks is in here. He's a prime factor. He could build that building if that's what you wanted. But nah, what happens there is we keep bringing folk from outside to take the money out of our pockets, leaving us with the burden of the, of the, of the tax dollars that you talking about and then telling us we can't find nobody to work. One of the things I know for a fact, we got more prisoners coming in here working than we got folk with jobs. That's insane. Are they gonna build the building? Because if they gonna build the building, you probably ain't gotta spend no five million dollars.
Mr. Lied, take it to your point, please.
I am. What you want me to do, sir? Do you want, what you want me to do? Do you want me to sit down? Because I know, I know, that's the way the whole black community, whole community I come from have been put out of the discussion. So if you want me to sit down, I have that attitude with me ever since I lived in this community. I will not be silent because of the fact that you don't like what I hear, what you, what I'm saying. I won't do that. I asked to be on this particular agenda because I don't want to be there with that limit that you put on the people for three minutes that you can have up there that ain't recorded or done nothing with. I'm sick of that mess because you don't have to answer for that. You got to answer for this because what we gonna do is we gonna, we gonna raise our fist with power to bring a lot of difference. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want me to sit down, tell me to do it.
Mr. Lied, I actually stay on point.
I am on point, yes.
You were talking all around. Please continue and stay on point, please.
That's what I'm doing, Mr. Mayor.
Finish, please.
I was warned that you gonna have to, now, Mr. Mayor. The leadership of URA don't live in Brunswick, from what I understand. They live in basketball. Where's the physical, physical, physical in this thing, Mr. Mayor? What subsidies would we have, Mr. Mayor, for this particular project? Why we gonna have to go out there on the idea that it's gonna cost us $300,000, $500,000 to operate a year? Why are we talking about $96,000 a year for a salary for executive director? Why are people laughing at you, Mr. Mayor, not me? They know I'm crazy. The thrill to leave a legacy, a building that will fall down and not be used is not good enough to spend these tax dollars again. Since URA is receiving the money, let them guarantee the funding without taxpayer burden. That no one around in the world is standing does not exist with the majority of the people in our community because we ain't been at the table. That's, that's a tactic that is used by this city. Elkins from Jacksonville is like the slave labor that you bring in every day. There are no contracts for the people that live in this city. Not where I live at. We are being left broke and burdened. As has been clear, we, we become a, a community of criminals where I'm told white folk is scared to come over there where we live at because that's all we are. I'm a human being. I fought for you behind to be able to deal. I ain't bringing nothing down. I'm gonna let folk understand that what happens is I went to here now for a particular reason so that the whole community could be involved in the decision-making. The whole thing, not half of it, not part of it.
Stay on point, Mr. Lied. Stay on point.
Mr. Mayor, I could tell if you told me that. I'm not gonna do that. We can't have things improved in the community I live in because you are afraid to come to us to be sad at it. We just broke. This project can't compete with Jacob. It can't compete with the splash of money that we done already sank into the art center on the campus of the college. Why can't you partner with that project? Since we done put money out there and you want a nice center, why don't the city partner with that project? You can't compete with the room that just been built at the library, not with that building. If we wanted to, we could put up an air-conditioned tent, and you couldn't compete with that with that building. You ain't gonna make no money with that building. That's the point. You know, they already told me you can't cost out everything. In fact, I think the word you used was you can't cost out anything at this point. We can. We can because the debt is costly for us. Your poor citizens can't contribute not one more dime. In fact, not one more penny. Please take this off the table tonight. For if you do, you will become the leaders we expect you to be. We want stuff. We want the figures. We want the location. We want to know who's gonna be the laborers, the builders. We want to know when we can be in the joint conference which you can talk about the decisions that need to be made that affect us in a positive way. Why now? There are some projects that we brought to the city. Elvin Lewis's project. He could even get water for two. Think about what you're doing, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lied, for that real long dissertation concerning our conference center and your feelings about what we should or should not do, and also the history lesson that you have expounded to us as well concerning this city, concerning our administration. I appreciate that very much. Mr. Lied, the long one we had in all throughout the discussion. So we will move right along, unless anyone appreciates like the comment?
And this will probably be the last comment I may concern. I've been a commissioner for four and a half years. A commissioner. More than that on one term since. And I love the city of Brunswick. Never in my life have I seen such blatant and malice intent to divide a community. Understand that I have no, I have nothing against people voicing their opinions, speaking up because it should be constitutional right. But as I have always asked from the day that I took this seat, is that when you bring your comments, bring a feasible resolution, an immediate resolution for everyone, not just because it's your special interest, but because it's something that you're truly, truly wanting to see bring this community together from the south end to the north end, from the south ward to the north ward. The Brunswick News has been blatant in its attempts, and it has been somewhat successful in dividing this community on this issue, which is a very important issue. And so everybody should have that opportunity to voice their concerns before we get this grungy. But never have I seen just blatant malice and intent by an entity to divide this community. And quote me on this, that's what Brunswick News has done. They did a survey on supposedly this entire community. Well, I'm a person that I look behind the numbers of numbers that's presented. The Brunswick News did a survey, supposedly does assume that their circulation covers the entirety of the county of Glen. Well, I know for a fact that Glen County has over 80,000 citizens. And the city of Brunswick has better than 16,000. the Brunswick has better than sixteen thousand. Well, this poll captured one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight people's voices. Do your math. That does not represent eighty thousand people, nor does it represent sixteen thousand three hundred people. Of that eleven hundred people, five hundred and something were city residents, five hundred and something were off of town, another one hundred and something were from somewhere that has not been accounted for. Do your math. Six hundred people are rounded up to what they said that the city commented on. Six hundred people does not sixteen thousand represent. Eleven hundred people does not eighty thousand represent. When they did percentages in the newspaper, they based ninety-four, ninety-seven percent, yes, on eleven hundred and twenty-eight people, not eighty thousand, not sixteen thousand three hundred, on eleven hundred and twenty-eight people. So, yes, your numbers are going to be astronomical, percentages in this city. Now, understand this, I'm not saying that I'm for the conference center. I'm for the city of Brunswick. I wanna see the dialogue continue on this project because it is a major issue. It is something that's going to affect not just us sitting here today, but it's gonna affect generations from now. I just wanted to say that piece before we move on into the next. Because everybody's been saying, oh, there's such an overwhelming concern or disagreement or not being for the conference center. Let's bring that into a closer picture. We've not heard from sixteen thousand people. We've not heard from eighty thousand people. And, and I hear you, I listen at you, and I continue to listen at you. So, understand and put into context, don't take out of context what I'm saying tonight. So, when it's relayed on in the community, make sure that you have Commissioner Harris's words correctly. I will add that to it, I will take nothing from it. But I listened at Mr. Live, who was on point with everything that he said. I don't think we're ready for this. I don't think that we have all the information that we need to have as a body to make such a life-changing decision. But I was willing to go through the process to vet everything. And regardless of whatever anybody in here thinks, we have been diligent, we have been looking beyond behind everything, every rock we can find, every rock we can turn around, regardless of what you think of this board or any of the people up here or any of the words that have been coming from up here to you out there. We have looked at everything that we're supposed to look at based upon the information that presented to us. Now, we've tasked our staff to do their jobs. We tasked the U R A with what they're supposed to do. But I'm just saying, right now, I have been asking from the onset of this entire process, show me an entire picture. I'm talking to the staff and I'm talking to the U R A. There's nothing against you all. You all did what we asked you to do. Y'all did that, and we appreciate that, I appreciate it. But for me, I have not been given an entire picture, and I need to have an entire picture before I can make such a life-changing decision. So, I'm gonna step in at this point, and I'm gonna do like Mr. Live did, and I'm gonna do like one hundred miles a day. I'm gonna ask that we continue to communicate regarding this matter before we move forward with making any decisions that's gonna be life-changing for everybody in the city of Brunswick and the county of Glen. I'm putting me out there because this seat is one vote. And I'm gonna let you know where my one vote is at right now. I'm not for moving any further until I have been satisfied with knowing all of the ins and outs, ups and downs, backwards and forwards, and sustainability of such a project of such magnitude. I'm not at a comfort level. I've been telling the U R A this, I've been telling the commissioners, I've been telling the city of Brunswick this, and I will continue to tell all of you, think what you wanna think of Commissioner Harris, but Commissioner Harris's seat is going to make the best decision that I can possibly make for everybody in the city of Brunswick, not just for a special interest group, because I'm beholden to every citizen, all sixteen thousand three hundred of them, to make the best decision on their behalf as a steward over the assets of the city of Brunswick. I'm done, I've said what I need to say until we get further into this agenda. Now, get up, you don't have to go and kiss her. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portell, and one other question. Please, on this issue we've already moved on. All right, so we move right along. Uh, first item, item number two, item considered for approval, considered approval December fifth, two thousand eighteen records scheduled meeting minutes. Please take a second to peruse and then our eighteen motion.
Second.
Motion second for the approval of December fifth, two thousand eighteen records scheduled meeting minutes and further discussion. Here is the all-in favor, please raise your right hand. Although we have one, one stamp from Commissioner Wade, that most of the past four on one stamp, that's it. Okay, item number three, considered approval of resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-five amendment funding request of public transportation application field for the following department transportation. Mr. Jim Drum, our senior manager, present.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Harris. Tonight you have a resolution that is identical to the one that presented to you on November seventh, the commission meeting with a couple changes. At that meeting, we talked about the ability to capture potential transportation funding that's offered to Georgia municipalities that are looking at the possibility of setting a transit system. It was brought to us after a work session by Rachel Hatcher, who was a consultant working with the county and the city, and actually in the BATS program. She came and explained how this office could be available and how the county and the city have entered into a grant this year to study the feasibility of putting a transportation system together, how that line actually operate. If, in fact, it becomes a decision that the city would like to serve as that sponsor, we have the ability to borrow funds that night, but to, except it's a grant, ninety percent funding, ten percent funding for the city for purchase of muscles. This application is no way, this obligation on us to accept these funds tonight, it's an application. We will find out from the conclusion of the study if we wish to move forward, these might be available a year recently, a year from now, October of twenty nineteen, if we do decide to move forward, studying the BATS. I think you're all familiar with that. It'll be out tonight, and recently we brought it back. If it's Hatcher in contact with us, there's additional planning. So, the resolution, which I said, twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five is identical to twenty-one, but it doesn't indicate that the funding that we applied for was five hundred and three thousand one fifty-eight, will now be increased to six hundred and seventy-one thousand one thirty-five, reflecting an increase of an additional sixty-eight thousand six persons. Considering this to, that expiration to increase the amount, the obligation of the city would be an additional sixteen thousand dollars in matched funds that we would have to put to that grant if we would like to move forward. I think what we're really trying to do is we're gonna place a holder to hold these funds for us for that fiscal year if we decide to move forward. If we don't do this, then in fact, we would lose a year if we decided to move forward and we haven't actually requested that it reserve for us, and they would be reallocated to other cities that have challenges.
Well, right now, you requested us to receive the extra money that's been added.
To amend our request, I thought.
Yes, one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
Additional, sir.
Okay. Commissioner, question, Thomas Portell, Mr. Drum. Lothamis, and what's your little favorite question?
I'd like a motion that we approved the adoption of the twenty eighteen dash twenty-five amendment funding request. We filed that petition on the county of Brunswick Department of Transportation, United States of America, George Department of Transportation, for grant under title forty-nine, S U S C section five three oh seven, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second, motion second for that motion that Commissioner Warren raised, so, uh, second by Commissioner Wade, and pros discussion. You're in the all-in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries, man, thank you, sir. All right, we are at item number four, which has quite, has changed quite differently than it is printed on your agenda. And it reads. All right, agenda item is, foreign production by Devon Company providing details of financing posts and recommended financing options. Consider for approval a resolution of the commission of the city of Brunswick ratifying the proof on the bond resolution adopted by the U R A of Brunswick to issue the agency resident bond, overriding the institutional agreement of agreement between the city and the U R A. Mr. Drum, please present.
I'm gonna start off with a handoff of Gavin Porter. The, the U R A, I believe Mr. Bennett, the, the U R A had completed its mission and design of the twenty thousand square foot Old Trafford Conference Center in late summer. At that point, the city went back a year ago in November of twenty, twenty seventeen, Gavin Porter made a presentation to us prior to going off to determine whether we were going to design this center, determining if we have the ability to obtain it if we chose to build a center, which was estimated at that time by Mr. Shea, our architect, who could admire of Shea. And then, the city moved forward with the design, and as a completion of the design, Mr. Bennett presented it to the city commission. It came back to the question, what has changed in the market, what is our next step in financing? At the November seventh, city commission meeting actually was a work session. Gavin Porter again updated that study, determined what our potential was with the revising what were the construction costs to be, and the city commission definitely authorized that we can move forward and bring forward to you proposals for financing. And so, we did go out and do that, and Mr. Getrick before we talk about the proposals that we received on this presentation. I guess, decidingly, Mr. Corey, at some point we'll discuss, the U R A has had its presentation and the commission to move forward, how they're able to, so, that, Mr. Corey, I suppose we'll go through the details of the content.
Thank you, Mr. Senior Commander, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. Appreciate the opportunity that came from you this evening. Again, my name is Doug Getrick, I'm with Gavin Porter Company, the city's financial office. As Mr. Drum mentioned earlier, we had the pleasure of presenting a conference of the financial review last year regarding the city's finances, and then came back at the November seventh work session, we represented our plan finance, and we were authorized to move forward with the RFP process. And tonight, I'm gonna walk you through the results of that process and our financial recommendation to move forward, should we choose to do that. If you flip to page one of the presentation, that's just a brief overview of interest rate trends, giving you perspective of what the market's done. Left-hand side of the page is the triple A M and B, which is the municipal benchmark for the twenty-year period since two thousand. The right-hand side of the page is just a shorter term since the November election, and mark on there is a Fed rate increases, a median increase rate today, and expected to be two or three times next year. So, that being said, flipping to page two is an overview of the RFP solicitation process. On November the twenty-eighth, Gavin Porter, on behalf of the U R A and the city, released a RFP to finance the series twenty nineteen revenue bonds. We sent it out to local, regional, and national lending institutions. We have over forty banks in our database, and we asked for a variety of terms. We wanted to get a twenty-year rate, weren't sure we're gonna get that, so we asked for fifteen-year term as well, but we're really looking for a twenty-year because of cash flow reasons. On December the twelfth, we received bids back from five lending institutions. Those institutions were BBNT, Capital One, First Bank, Pennecl Public Finance, and Sterling National Bank. And we ended up getting three bids that provided a fixed rate for the full twenty-year term, and the highlighted include, on the bottom right section, is our recommendation tonight is the proposal from Sterling National Bank, which had a twenty-year fixed rate at three point seven six percent. Flipping to page two, or page three, pardon me, is the summary of the proposals that we received from Sterling. They authorized an issuance up to five million dollars, which the U R A approved last night. The rate, the three point seven six, is a, is a fixed rate, so it's not subject to change. There is some prepayment flexibility, which is what we wanted to by going to the bank on the option post the public market. It can be refinanced for savings starting in November of twenty-three. However, there is a one-time sort of exception where it allows for the city to prepay with excess proceeds of the bond when the, when you guys are rebuilding construction, meaning you're not to exceed maximum price. So, if it comes in lower, without any penalty, the city has the ability to pay down the debt outstanding at, at no cost. There is no bank fees associated with the proposal, meaning they're not gonna charge for their counsel to, to review it or any sort of initiation fee or anything like that. The only condition that they have is that they want to close by January the twenty-eighth and accept their bid. Flipping to page four is the estimated debt service associated with financing. You can see there's no payment in this fiscal year, but starting next year in twenty-twenty, fifty twenty twenty, the annual payment's roughly three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for a period of twenty years. When we presented the plan finance for you guys, authorized us to move forward, the commission did, we used a planning rate of four percent. So, the three point seven six is nearly quarter percent better. So, we got that, that's further proof that we received very strong comments. So, that being said, our recommendation on rationale on page five is that should the commission decide to move forward this evening, that we would recommend accepting the bid from Sterling National Bank. The rationale behind that is that it's a fixed rate, fixed rate for, for a full twenty-year term. It's also fixed between now and closing, meaning that's not set on some benchmarking subject to change between now and closing date. There's no lender's fees associated. There's no lender's fees associated with it. And ultimately, there is some increasing flexibility in the future for refinancing purposes, but also in the short term, although which would allow the commission to downsize the loan if the price came lower than anticipated. The next page just has a series of next steps. Tonight, you would be asked to, if you so choose, asked to modify the bond resolution that the URA approved last night and also approve the interim contract agreement with the URA, which provide payment for the debt service. It's a common financing structure throughout the state. Do a number of deals that way. We then go through the validation process and close on or around January twenty-eighth. And with that, I'll pause and answering questions may have, the appendix has some more details of the bids received to prove that your procedure, hopefully you want to go through our recommendations. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
Any questions for Doug?
I have one. Could you please elaborate on how it would flow if, let's say, seven to five million or something, two and a half million that we actually need to borrow?
So, on the day of closing, all the proceeds would be drawn into the city's account.
The full five million?
Full five million, yeah. And then what would happen is the city would then use that excess proceeds, two point five million would be used to pay down the debt service. So the amount outstanding would go from five million to two point five million.
Is there a floor, a minimum amount, in how it works?
The way that the bond, I'll defer to the city's terms, obviously, but the way that the bond resolution was negotiated on behalf of the city was that the term excess proceeds was used. So there's really, there was no dollar amount defined in the balance sheet.
So to verify that, if the city commission chose, or first I should say, if they'd moved forward and they were financing savings as the URA goes to happen, we only four million and we can get it back. Or if the city chose to alter the project to build a smaller facility, a smaller two million, the city would pay the three million back, pay down the debt, and only I won't charge you two million. In that sense, I don't have exactly.
But we would not be able to make that lump sum payback until twenty twenty-three?
No, no, that's only for refinancing purposes.
Go back.
The way the documents have recommended the negotiations with the lender, that can be done at any, at any time on an interest payment date. So that would be starting, I believe, November one.
So we would be able to, so whatever, if we were to change the project for the savings, we have to go through another one, other than the interest that they had during the short period that we had the money?
Yes, sir.
Would you, would you also maybe the commission, I think it's something that you've written right up, is that once the money would come into the city's accounts initially, we would be able to invest it, so we would not have the full cost of interest?
That, that is correct. So, once the proceeds are drawn, you'd be paying three point seven six interest on it, but depending on what the bank may want to provide earnings, the, the cap would offset any of those interest costs. So if it were, you're paying three point seven six and earning two percent, given, given example here, then that cost would be four point seven six until the money gets paid.
Mr. City Mayor, it's interesting, we can get in on our Georgia one funds.
Further than finance, George, is, is the debt bonds like, I think it's about six percent, like, I don't know.
Are there any restrictions on the type of project in that, let's say, we, we make some changes to the project and it becomes more, we partner with a private entity and it becomes a public-private partnership? Are there any restrictions on that? Or if we add condos to the second, third, and the fourth floor and sell off condos to bring revenue in and help pay for the conference facility? Are there, are there restrictions at all on how we partner or move through the development?
I think that would likely get some loss issues. That would likely, it would get some loss issues. I mean, so long as the city is the owner of the building and the land underneath it, I mean, there can be private, public-private partnerships taking place. Either, you know, investor would have to understand that there are limitations to selling or how they may market the building. At the end of the day, because this possible money is going to be utilized to build the conference center, it is a city project, it's a city most valuable.
Can we use this lost money for something, repurpose that and then borrow our money for a project such as Commissioner Warren? Give it a public partnership with it.
The bonds that are currently being discussed are earmarked and can only be used for conference center projects.
Right, I understand.
We need it to.
That's difficult to find a bidding on right now, I think, but...
We can repurpose our money, our lost money for something else, and then have the money that we borrowed for, for, what's that?
So if you borrow the money, you have to make it to the conference center.
So if we build a conference center, what I'm saying, if we repurpose this lost money for something else? That's what I asked, the question. I say if we borrow five million dollars for private partnership with someone to build a conference center, it's completely separate from this? Completely separate from this?
Sure.
That way?
If it's lost to repurpose?
It's lost to repurpose for something else?
You'd have to take it to a, understand that?
Sure. Since this seem to be a hangup with us right at this moment.
How long is this proposal good for?
So, we have to accept their terms by December twenty-eighth, I believe, from the term she expired. And the rate is held firm up until on or around January twenty-eighth.
So, January twenty-eighth?
Well, in order to get the interest rate that's stated in here, we need to accept the proposal by December.
And it goes on it, how much, like?
Yeah, correct. There'd be a series of iterations of floating documents that have to be taken. So, we can have another meeting to decide if we'd like to support that best.
Does it happen until before December twenty-eighth?
Understand that.
If you choose to do that, it's...
You know, the Federal Reserve, the Fed rate is going to read this count rate by two and a half, makes it to two, two and a half. And they're saying that, you know, if you said, well, they were calling about a four half and a year, that's really what we were looking at, is to really expedite looking for this money. And now it looks like they're not going to do that. They, they said probably two times. The language does not look good for two times, really, truly. So, my question is, is what is this going to do for us with change in the position of the Federal Reserve? I mean, we got our decision here. You can sit here and you can listen to the fatulation that I have and purposefully willing to listen to all my phone, that's what it takes. But it shows a lot of opposition to what we're doing here. We need to know just exactly what you think about what we're trying to fire today. Because it really was advantageous to get this on this agenda tonight, because we wanted to do it to the lowest cost of possible, but only those that are going to help us with this. Please give us some advice.
Yes, sir. Obviously, we don't, we have, first of all, we'd be here tonight, we'd be spending money, obviously. But I think that the critical point here is that the Fed is really driving overnight rates. It doesn't have as large an impact on longer-term rates. Meaning that when they raise a percentage, it really affects years and months and five. The longer-term rates are affected by things such as the global economy and things of that nature. And I think page one of your presentation, the interest rates, sometimes the Fed increases, rates go down, sometimes they increase and goes up. But it, it, it don't all pan. Certainly with the Fed increasing, they think the economy is strong, with a strong economy comes higher, higher inflation, higher interest rates.
What are the questions for Doug? City Attorney will speak of decision.
What you should have before you tonight is a resolution with the four intergovernmental agreement attached to it as well. I believe you've also been given the copy. But the odd resolution that was passed by Urban redevelopment Agency last night, in essence, what these documents are doing is that the Urban redevelopment Agency last night heard the same presentation and recommendation by Davenport in terms of five million dollars over twenty years, with three point seven six locked into. They passed their bond resolution, essentially stating that it would be easier for the bond and Sterling National would purchase the bond. But for all intents and purposes, the city would be the one that would receive the funding, manage the bonds, and ultimately pay out for the construction of the conference center. In order to do that, what is required of the city tonight would be to pass the resolution you have before you that would ratify the decision made by the Urban redevelopment Agency last night in passing their bond resolution. In doing so, also essentially providing authority to the mayor that upon the closing date of the financing, he would be able to execute the intergovernmental agreement. The intergovernmental agreement was attached, or is attached to this, to the date of the bond resolution, the URA bond resolution, you should also have a copy, I handed out before the resolution tonight. So if the URA also approved their bond resolution, that resolution could in similar language that allow the URA to execute that intergovernmental agreement at the same time upon the closing of the financing. Doug already sort of hit on quite a bit of the details in here. Well, I think one of the important details that was previously discussed is prepayment, the one-time first payment option. In looking at that, we know that the potential is to approve the elements contract, which would provide three months of pre-construction services. And upon the end of that pre-construction service, there'd be a guaranteed maximum price amendment intended for the fiscal, the city commission. During that meeting, upon that presentation, the city commission elected to move forward the guaranteed maximum price amendment. And that maximum price amount below the five million over the amount in the construction fund, that would be the opportunity that the city would have to pay down the financing amount with the excess funds. So, for the city argument, if the guaranteed maximum price comes in and the city realizes the savings, it is only necessary that two point five million be used in the financing, then the remainder of the excess funds, whatever is in that, that, that fund, that construction fund, probably two point, probably some more than four, I would assume, would be able to be utilized by the city and pay down one amount. That is the one type of repayment option. Then there are of course other repayment options that fall later on after twenty twenty-three, whether it be refinancing or paying it out. So, in looking at this from, in terms of like a whole picture, the URA is really a conduit that is providing this financing, that is working for the city. That is what we'll charge everything if the city ratifies the resolution tonight. And in looking, if you take a look at page six of Doug's presentation, in the next section, since already discussed the fact that tonight will be the decision of whether or not to approve the resolution modifying the URA bond resolution in the form of intergovernmental agreement, what would be required next would be, essentially next week, the city would be filing, the bond, the court saves are filing, and I should superior courts seeking bond validation. And I should be looking everything over and ensuring that things are done appropriately, validating the bond, and then upon that approval by the, by the courts, likely at a hearing we expect, at the end of January fourteenth, we do not have a date at the moment, that would provide the ability to close on the funding on January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen. That is essentially the term and conditions that are included here tonight. Any questions for?
If Superior Court doesn't validate, then...
Back to the draw or the notice? I mean, I think that would be highly radical, it's also a possibility, but you don't necessarily expect that to happen if the bond council or other society were promising the ability to have the judge approved it, some more formally, just to ensure that the proper process was followed, the city blew the bonds, advertising, the appropriate parties sat, took a concession, votes, and approved it and executed with the proper authorization.
Any further questions?
I have a question. Could you explain, not only for the commission, but for those that are still sitting here and listening, as we're learning, being educated as we, pardon, may ask the questions here in a other forum, we may have already talked about it, but it's important to ask the question. Could you please explain, Mr. Davenport, that it might need to come out, but if we, if we delay the vote, we defer, we, whatever, or we completely say we don't want to get this round at all for five million? What are the repercussions? I know that it's been mentioned that if we come back at a later point, I don't know how late or at what point, if we're penalized or not looked at favorably or at risk, can you talk about that to somebody?
I think they sort of hit on it a little bit already, but essentially, if the December twenty-eighth didn't like pass without the city, except it was one finding options, if the terms would expire, if the city later, a later date, elected to go back out, it would need to go through the same process again, the RFP, say, take five resolutions. And I think, Doug, you speak a little bit on that, that the going back out again, there may be some, a bit of a connotation as to having already done it once, rejecting and then coming back out on the market or whatever.
So even if the project is, is changed and scaled down, it's less, you know, more easy points because of the...
I don't know if I can speak to that necessarily.
For Doug's card, so if you scale the project down, if you were to, I mean, you do have that option, and you could obviously pay back all of, which you wouldn't pay back, that's what you're talking about, additional funding, not two point five million, that happened with Doug's claim.
Yeah, there's obviously no, there's no guarantee as to what would happen going forward. Rates could be higher, rates could be lower, who knows for the department interest rate perspective. But I think that if, if you're, you may be less likely in the same people that have provided bids. There's no guarantee, there might be a new person, but, you know, if you were to go through the efforts to put in a proposal and have it be deferred, it'd have to be their best time effort to evaluate whether or not they want to consider re-proposing for this project.
And that, the increase that you see with twenty-five basis points, you need a higher amount of funding that we have to pay for. He cleared the commission, that comes out there.
I think she's having a little bit of a budget review.
Certainly.
If the budget was reduced, they'd not find...
Oh, no, they're not, the difference would be, it's still a couple of costs, you're right, the budget was significantly reduced to be a savings bar. But if we were to borrow, we'd only use three hundred dollars, five hundred thousand, or is the basic points that the city would save, because we have a lower interest rate than we would have in the past in three months.
That's correct. I can give you perspective, the, the four percent interest rate versus the three point seven six, the cost of that over the life of the loan is a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, twenty-five basis points.
And that's based on the final, I think?
Yeah, correct. That's based on the final.
But you also said that the increase by the Fed went more towards the overnight rates and not the long-term rates.
That's right.
That's it, Mr. Attorney?
I think, unless there's an additional question, sir.
Any additional questions for City Attorney?
So when we voted on, you voted on all this at one time?
That's correct. I mean, the way the bond resolution is written, because the agency, URA, is the issuer, they've already essentially selected Sterling, I'm sorry, Sterling's terms of financing conditions have already been included in their bond resolution that was passed last night. So the city's action tonight in ratifying the URA's bond resolution is an essential acceptance of that bond resolution and saying, that is what we're moving forward with, we are approving that that be done, that the process going forward for bond validation, essentially that we go forward and do all of that, and then after closing, rather than having another meeting of both boards and having the 90K approved, since the forms are already being approved and authorized within this resolution, the mayor and the URA chair group being assigned to close on the financing. So in essence, you are sort of being asked to do all of that. There's already been that decision made, but it has to be ratified at this board.
Now, this is similar to what the county had to do when they borrowed money from the EDA to do the financial liability.
The EDA, the EDA and the URA has written, as created by the Constitution, do have differences, but it is a similar, there's a difference in how the validation process goes forward, but it is similar in nature.
And so basically, we are voting on approving the financial resolution by the URA for the funding with Sterling, and also for the execution of the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the URA.
That's correct, that's right. An intergovernmental agreement goes like the terms and conditions of this, the bond resolution already goes through many several key parties, because Prime South Bank already holds several accounts for the city, that would be the bank that is essentially going to be holding, you know, the cost of issuance fund, the construction fund, the service funds, the finance director has been named to the bond resolution, being several parties that want to pay agent. So it's going to be somebody's management by the city, it's just you even at the bond, you know, we have to utilize the URA to provide this financing. But as that resolution lays out, it's essentially all the city staff or the bank, Prime South being those parties in those roles.
Okay, so basically, we are voting on the resolution by the URA for the bond, and also the intergovernmental agreement, but we are not voting on the construction of the project?
No, of course, that is separate, that is...
We're voting on to...
But we're voting to say that we are going to, or we could possibly borrow the five million dollars.
This is our, this is our, this obligation to borrow.
And any further questions, Commissioner?
The only other question I have is if this is approved, and we were to borrow the total five million, but then for whatever reason, I like to look at all angles or something, we decide we don't want any, we don't pay notice any of the five million. Is there, I know that we can, four, five million, be paid back at one time, it's not...
I think the only, the only true cost would be the cost of issue, like I said, your crew issue, crew interest, so there would be some small cost for the legal counsel that would be providing the, other than that, there'd be no answer, other than bid.
And approximate amount of maybe...
We estimated it around the...
So the process...
I know that's important, Commissioner.
Yes.
So, Commissioner, I think we have explained, they've been explaining to us our resolve here as to what we need to do. And basically, the motion, what we are voting on, the financial proposal presented to us by our City Attorney from the URA on the bond resolution, and also for authorizing the execution of the intergovernmental agreement.
And the intergovernmental agreement lays out the payment, right, so we accept forth this in obligation on the city of Brunswick.
Okay. Are there any further discussion, further comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
It's been our motion that we accept the bond resolution from the URA and the intergovernmental agreement between the two of them, from the URA, for the bond, for the amount of five million dollars.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second? I don't hear a second. I will second that motion. So it's probably motion and second for this permission to approve the resolution, approve the resolution for the bond, the resolution adopted by the URA, and also the execution of the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the URA. Any further discussion? I hope I'm understanding this correctly, by doing this, basically what we're doing is putting the funding in place, if we want to use it, we can, sometimes we don't have it.
That's correct. You would be accepting the funding, you know, it's not just taking help of your URA, you're teaching them love, and you have the funds on our accounts for their use. You choose not to build or rebuild something west, you turn it back to the main stuff. You choose not to do anything, and you just, you have to dispense it closely without any returns. Because if you chose to build something smaller...
So to be relatively clear, if you take out five million dollars in approval, there's not going to be, once the closing is done, there won't be five million dollars just to be paid back, there will be some costs pulled out of that five million dollars.
My other question is, can you say, I heard you say something, do we have to specifically put these funds at prime site?
That is the way the bond resolution reads. But while they're there, there are, there are options that are provided for in bond resolution, in the EDA, that we can be a bit, on this little bit, that allows the investment of those funds to help off the interest. And one of them, I believe, is directly to the section, I think one of the available investments is, is, is true of one... Actually, I think the one you have before, you should find page 29. Okay. On article six, investment money preservation, deposits, under six, 601A, construction fund money, that is a provision for the resolution, you see, option number one is the local investment pool, and then option two lays out other securities that you might be able to invest the money in.
We're talking about potentially getting money, that we potentially don't want to go through the check. But one thing we know is if we get this money, and we decide not to use it, we are going to have a cost, however much that cost may be, it's still going to be a cost. But we're talking about, we can offset the cost. If we invest the money, paying 3.76% versus potentially investing the money until we decide if we want to use it or not, at 2%, still having a gap between each percentages of what it's going to cost us versus what we'll have to pay back versus all this other stuff. Okay. So that's like me going to the car lot and saying, I want that car right there, but I ain't quite sure. You just tell me, you just send me the bill and tell me how much it's going to cost me. But I want that car right there. I don't know what you're going to charge me for. I don't know what my bottom line is going to be for, but you tell me when you send me the bill.
If you pay it up, you're going to get a car sale.
If I took it, it would be a real good cost. But, but, but I, I just can't get as a, as a basic scenario. I just...
Any further questions?
I think I'd have to say this. My seat says, I'm going to handle this money like I would handle my money coming out of my own house. I'm going to make this decision like I'm going to make this decision for the money coming out of my own house, which it really is, because what's not being said is that all of us up here are city residents, so we all are still going to be affected by whether this decision is made tonight, because I am a city resident as well, and I do pay city taxes, as well as county taxes, but I ain't at the county fussing when they raising my taxes. So I want everybody here tonight to go fuss at the camera the same way they don't came here and busted us. But, but, but that's how I'm looking at this. I'm going to make this decision based on how I would choose to make the decision of those ones coming out, because they are, it's what's the little acronym that was used, other people's money? So it's not opium, because it is our money, because we are city residents, so the opium is going to hit our house as well. So I don't want to get cooked on opium. But I do want to make a good stewardship decision, and I would make it based on the same way I would make it coming out of my own house.
Further comments?
I'd just like to make one quick thing.
Be quiet, sir. Madam, third comment?
Commissioner Kason, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Williams, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Martin, how do you vote? Mayor Proton Harris, how do you vote?
If her.
Mayor Harper, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is denied. Okay, item number five. Tree Board, one more. We have St. Anne Kent, who has a term expired, expired from 12/7, expired since December. She is requested to be reappointed, at least once you will have played. Are you motion second to reappoint St. Anne Kent to the Tree Board, any further discussion?
Yes, I have seen information on the Tree Board that Miss Kent is not attending meetings. So she's not attending the meetings, why would we put her on the back of this board? Out of nine meetings, Miss Kent has been present at three, so we need to reconsider playing Miss Kent on this board, she's not participating on the board, so why would we put her back?
You know, I would say this, you know, that Tree Board should have, they should actually to force to not reappoint Miss Kent.
And, and...
And they should have initiated, they were treated for her to be expelled from that, and they did not.
Okay, then, Commissioner, in light of that, the light of that information, the other information.
Well, I would like to say further that it would be very helpful if we could get a recommendation from the local stakeholders that the person is reapplying for to continue, and it would be also helpful, I think, Mayor Proton Harris, to get an idea of how many meetings that person has attended over the course of the time they serve.
Mr. Mayor, Emily was, she, she was not processed to move from the board because the bond laws indicate she got in this three consecutive meetings, she had that done, she would always come and make the third meeting, however, she was just recently, the very last meeting, missed her third consecutive meeting, and that was prior, that was after she put her in. So she was still...
So, Commissioner, do you want to defer this until we get an opportunity to talk to the Tree Board and see what they would like to do with this member?
Yes.
Want you to defer?
Second.
Okay, send your first motion, Commissioner Williams, and your new motion to defer, yes. I want the motion to defer. I got a deferment in a second. Any further discussion? I want to figure defer this into our next meeting, our second meeting in January, please wish right of. We defer this motion, this appointment until January 78. Second meeting in January. All right, the next item is alcohol beverage license to renew, Paul Newell just presented, consider a cool alcohol beverage license to Brooklyn Landing Marina.
Good evening.
Evening.
I need to address you guys, several meetings ago, but I wanted to let you all know this is actually the first year Lynn Muley and I were talking, the assistant, my ass to record, this is actually the first year that she said in years that we've had all of our alcohol licensing rules in all time, so you guys can contribute into what you want to, but I say that's the business men and women realize that they don't want these problems. I'm here for a renewal of the Brooklyn Landing Marina. This is for the on-purpose consumption of beer online. We've come to a resolution that they are allowed, which will allow them to have that, so we're just going to switch their business license or collect such, and we are not doing these other sales. So it's just on-purpose consumption of beer online.
Okay, Commissioner, please.
Okay, Commissioner, those questions.
I'd like to vote to approve the special Bruntland Marina request for.
Motion second for a true Bruntland Marina to have all beverage license or renewal. Further discussion? I want to make this way to right hand. I also carry that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we are, item number seven seems to not be applicable.
If I could, Mayor, if I could, commission.
You can.
Item number seven, obviously, the structure amendment between Elkins and the city of Brunswick. They allude to the earlier action, like, to be a better idea at this point to defer indefinitely until we have the opportunity to approve. But it's subject to the.
Okay.
Commission.
Commissioner, can I get that to defer? Motion to defer.
Seven.
Motion seven for a deferment of this item, item seven. Concerning contract between sixty-one and Elkins Construction. Any further discussion? You're in the automatic, please wave your right hand. I also carry that. Thank you, sir. Yes. Yes, item number eight, amendment to the alcohol.
What you have before you is the first summary, thank you for adding these to our decision tonight. This ordinance amendment is the ordinance amendment that we called, essentially known as the Brunch Bill. If you guys recall, in July two thousand and eighteen, I'm sorry, effective date, July first, two thousand and eighteen, the Georgia Legislature passed a bill called the Brunch Bill. It'll allow restaurants that are open on Sunday, providing Sunday sales of alcohol beverages to serve beginning at eleven o'clock in the morning, as opposed to twelve thirty in the afternoon. What was required is that the city passed a resolution, which the city did in July eighteen, two thousand and eighteen, placing the question on a referendum ballot, allowing the city residents to vote. But now if they would like to see that change, we may provide the additional hour and a half. Number six, the votes taken, and the city residents voted in favor of the order of amendment, sixty-four percent voted in favor. So what you have before you, right, is the last sort of statements process. This is a first reading, and as you can tell, it's not numbered because it is so short. All it does, it extends the ordinance amendment. You can see at the bottom of page one, under section three, match thirteen of the alcohol beverage ordinance the city runs over, and of course, using the newest as the most recent you've approved. Under subsection B, may change the alcohol, maybe sold for consumption on premises on Sunday from eleven AM until midnight in any restaurant licensed, or so they say. Any establishment which survives may lose fifty percent of its annual gross income from rental groups or rental lodging. And that is essentially, there's, on the seventh page, there are some other revisions that were made. The only revision that really does any, both revisions were just sort of cleaning up. Under subsection F, I believe the language that said effective January first, two thousand and fourteen, that language that was utilized when the city first passed the Sunday sales ordinance. So it's not really necessary at this point, it's already been passed and it is the law of the code of the city. Under subsection G, it just, it's an L, maybe extended, same amount, just support above, rather than specifically because it may be in subsection C, if that is not incorrect. Both subsections C and D address how some of those may be made. So we needed to include P in there as well, I just thought it would best to state the elements to state in the statement. So that's all, it's just for discussion at this point. And I'd have to bring back in the motion that Commissioner Kason read in earlier, that I think is January second, because ideally, that would of course be the night, I think that's the first commission meeting of two thousand and nineteen. We hope to pass that day and then take it back in two thousand and nineteen. Thank you for your question.
Any questions for our city attorney? We'll move over.
Go ahead and add a half.
All right, thank you. Yes. Okay, item number nine, just to approve of self-admissionment to the operational agreement between joint water and sewer commission, the JWS City, Lynn County, and the city of Bruntland.
And I should have stated that the last item is all state the same for this item. I believe Lynn County has already passed the Brunch Bill.
Okay.
And saying this, this item, the forty-two seventh amendment to the operational agreement between city, county, and joint water and sewer commission. If you recall, I believe it was two thousand and seventeen, there was a fifth amendment to the operational agreement. After the SPOSS was passed in two thousand and sixteen, all parties came together, amended the operation to allow, essentially moving forward from that certain date, allowing joint water and sewer to accept SPOSS funds. What was determined subsequent to that is that there was, I believe there was money remaining from SPOSS five and in order for the joint water and sewer to be able to manage the money that was made in SPOSS five for water and sewer improvements to Academy Creek, they are asking for this addendum, which essentially amends the contract, if you look on page two or four, under section twenty C, the language used to read of SPOSS projects beginning with SPOSS two thousand and sixteen. That language is going to remove, it just states that SPOSS interoperable agreement notwithstanding anything that's been contrary to this operation agreement, the joint water survey is specifically authorized by the city and the county and separate interoperable agreement with the joint water sewer receive direct disbursements of eligible SPOSS funds from city and county for approved water and sewer SPOSS projects. And they complete such projects, such SPOSS projects on their own. So what that would do is that if the city elects to pass it tonight, and if the county is taking it up, that would be tomorrow night, they would also be entering into a new agreement for the joint water and sewer tomorrow to provide those SPOSS five funds for the improvement of Academy Creek. That is obviously an interoperable amendment that would require the city approval. I can't foresee the time of the city to be eager to interoperable remake with joint water and sewer SPOSS money, but it does provide against that flexibility in there. That is essential.
Any questions, commissioners? If not, I entertain motion.
Mr. Mayor, our motion that we approve the self-admissionment, operation agreement between city of Bruntland, Lynn County, and County's own board and city commission.
Second.
Motion second for an approval of self-admissionment to operating agreement between JWS City and City County. Any further discussion? You're in the automatic, please wave your right hand. All right, I also carry that. Okay, we've come to the end of our registered, printed agenda. Any further need for the same session?
Just litigation update and a review of the state.
Also, question.
Question to adjourn to the same session for full state litigation and.
Second, motion second for an approval during the same session. Any further discussion, you're in the automatic, please wave your right hand. All right, we excel during to the same session, after which we come back and finish our registered meeting and what we want to adjourn for twenty years. We stand adjourned to the same session.